Good evening. Welcome to the November 9th, 2015 Regular City Commission Meeting. This is the annual organizational meeting of the Marquette City Commission. In accordance with the City Charter, Section 2.2, the City Clerk is to preside over this proceedings throughout the point when the Mayor and Mayor Pro Tem are elected, at which point the new Mayor will preside over the remainder of the meeting. With that, if you'll join me in the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag, we will proceed. I'll now call the roll of the current commission. Commissioner Baldini?
Here.
Commissioner Kimbensee?
Here.
Commissioner Conley?
Here.
Commissioner Frazier?
Here.
Commissioner Reynolds?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Campana?
Here.
Mayor Coine?
Here.
How do we make it on? It's on? Okay. First time. Well, as you all know, Mayor Coine is not running for reelection, and he's terminated or he's leaving us after this meeting. On behalf of the City Commission and city residents of Marquette, I am pleased to present the Certificate of Appreciation to Mayor Coine. First, a couple things. Mike has served the city of Marquette in a very voluntary manner, in a most distinguished way. Few of the things that he's done. He served 13 years as a Commissioner at five different times. He was first elected in 1984. He's been Mayor four different times. He's worked with 100 different Commissioners. I don't know how many City Managers. I'd say three or four. Excuse me, seven. Seems like it. He has served one year on the Charter Commission, and I believe on the Peter White Public Library Board. Very active on the Bay Cliff Board, I believe, and probably many others that I'm not aware of. In the two years that I've been on the Commission with Mike, he's been involved in all the major issue, all the issues, most notably the Eagle Mine Truck Route, Clark Park Acquisition, the Duke Life Point-Marquette General Relocation and Purchase, Service Center Relocation, and most recently, the Board of Light and Power Energy Plant Development, and many other issues that we had to deal with. So, it's a certificate of appreciation presented to J. Michael Coine, Marquette City Commissioner, for such and such date. So, thank you, Mike. We're gonna miss you.
Mike would probably like to give us a few comments, I believe. Thank you. I have to revise my speech because you already said some of the things I was gonna say, Dave. Thank you for serving as Mayor Pro Tem. And I'd like to thank my wife Emily for her support and patience for these past three years, and it makes it a lot easier. It's been a real honor to serve with you as a Commissioner, and particularly this year to serve you as your Mayor. I, as Dave said, I've done this four times, and I think this was the hardest ever, and yet I think we accomplished the most ever that I've been on a Commission. I think we've really tried and worked very hard to make this a better place to live, to work, to play, and grow old, while maintaining a great quality of life. And Commissioner Reynolds keeps reminding me that I'm 50 years older than she is, but she is the youngest Commissioner that's served ever. But she is also getting older. She's three years older than when she started saying that.[303.33][303.33](laughter) And over the years, as Dave mentioned, I've served with 100 Commissioners. Exactly. And I never would've gotten to know some of those folks without serving, and they've proved to be just spectacular people and very dedicated. Many of them have become my good friends, and they've enriched and blessed my life personally. I want to thank the former Mayors and other Commissioners who came tonight just to say thank you very much for your service and for being my friend. I've also, over these periods of years, gotten to know a lot of city employees, and they do a tremendous job. I also want to take a minute to really thank Bill Vida for his hard work and vision. He accomplished a lot in the five-year term that he spent as City Manager. Many of the issues that we're just dealing with now were instituted by him, so thank you, Bill. And I also want to thank Mike Angeli for stepping up at a critical time, being willing to serve, and in the brief time that you have, a super job you really have. And I have not heard one bad word about you from anybody, other than just praise, so thank you. And also your department heads, and I think this is probably why you're so successful, is you have great department heads, and you know how to use them well, and they support you, and they have done a tremendous job. So, thanks to them. And finally, I want to thank all the citizens of Marquette for giving me an opportunity to represent them. I did the best I could. I tried to treat everyone with respect, to listen to them, and to use common sense to work on their behalf. In closing, I want to congratulate the two newly-elected Commissioners, and I wish the Commission the very best in their efforts to keep Marquette the great place that it is. So, thanks very much. And I'm gonna go sit down.[435.03][435.03](applause)
If the two new elected Commissioners would join me at the lectern, please. You can all step in. If you can both raise your hands, please, and read your oath.
I, Mike Ford, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Michigan, and the Charter of the City of Marquette, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of the Marquette City Commission of the City of Marquette according to the best of my ability, so help me God.
Welcome. If you'd both sign for me. As a reminder, please sign your name on the back of your ballots.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And the Charter of the City of Marquette.
And the Charter of the City of Marquette.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office.
Of Mayor of the City of Marquette.
Of Mayor of the City of Marquette.
According to the best of my ability, so help me God.
According to the best of my ability, so help me God.
We'll now conduct the election for the Mayor Pro Tem. Please remember to sign the back of your ballots. The election was only 3 to 2. We'll need to vote again. I only have four sets, guys. We'll need to vote again. 3 to 2. I only have four sets, guys. 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 Result was 3 to 2. Will you vote again?[1363.41][1363.41](laughter) Please ignore the Mayor. These are now Mayor Pro Tem ballots. Again, two ties for three in a single vote. Three votes for Commissioner Reynolds, three votes for Commissioner Conley, one for Commissioner Baldini. Congratulations, Commissioner Reynolds. You're Mayor Pro Tem. Would you step to the lectern with me? That I will support the Constitution of the United States. That I will support the Constitution of the United States. The Constitution of the State of Michigan. The Constitution of the State of Michigan. And the Charter of the City of Marquette. And the Charter of the City of Marquette. According to the best of my ability, so help me God. According to the best of my ability, so help me God. Ms. City Clerk, if you could give us a roll call, please. Commissioner Baldini?
Here.
Commissioner Kimbensee?
Here.
Commissioner Conley?
Here.
Commissioner Frazier?
Here.
Commissioner Plord?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Campana?
Here.
Excuse me. Mayor Campana?
Still here.
Still here.[1614.16][1614.16](laughter) And Mayor Pro Tem Reynolds?
Here.
Okay, in front of us, we have the agenda. We would need a motion to approve it. Commissioner Conley?
I move that we approve the agenda as presented.
Second? Anyone? Commissioner Frazier?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye. Say yes.
Yes.
Oppose? Pass 7 to 1, 7 to 0. I do not have any announcements. Short meeting, short agenda. Next, we have public comment. If you wish to speak on an agenda item, but we do not have any, so we're gonna move right to just straight public comment. You have three minutes to do this. We have a timer on my left.
Miss City Clerk, if you could give us a roll call, please.
Thank you, Mayor Campana. Commissioner Baldini.
Here.
Commissioner Cambenzi.
Here.
Commissioner Conley.
Here.
Commissioner Frazier.
Here.
Commissioner Plord.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Campana.
Here.
Excuse me. Mayor Campana.
Still here.
Still here. And Mayor Pro Tem Reynolds.
Here.
Okay, in front of us, we have the agenda. We would need a motion to approve it. Commissioners? Commissioner Conley?
I move that we approve the agenda as presented.
Second, anyone? Commissioner Frazier?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye. Say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Pass seven to one, seven to zero. I do not have any announcements. Short meeting, short agenda. Next, we have public comment. If you wish to speak on an agenda item, but we do not have any, so we're going to move right to just straight public comment. You have three minutes to do this. We have a timer on my left. And if you would keep an eye on that, to watch your time. When you come up, if you would give us your name, address, and municipality that you live in. Anybody wish to make public comment?
Frank Jeffero, three fifty East Rid Street, Marquette. These are my opinions. October twenty-sixth, this board received a third request to adopt a nondiscrimination resolution. Twice you'd blown the group off. It's always great when new residents learn how this board operates. It was such a lame excuse for a document that's so easy to write. Simply look at those of other cities and merge the best aspects of them all into ours. Actually, it'd be discriminating against the rest of us if you adopted the resolution, because this board has routinely blown off parties whose concerns don't concur with the members' agendas. Coyne mentioned the neighborhood is the reason, not the site or service center just southwest of Lincoln and Wright. He doubtfully considered the building, the back wall, east of an existing buffer on the west end. The offices on the south end, and the parking and outdoor facilities to the north and east. The west wall would block the noise, and placing the courts north of Wright Street would eliminate neighbors' concerns about the swearing. Coyne has lied twice again. October twenty-sixth, he stated his commitment to public service. In here, he mainly served himself, savering his role as the big shot who doesn't participate unless he's paid. The same man who cited me for leaving the building after my remarks, but only because he'd stolen closing comment from us. That's how Coyne served the public. Please restore closing comment, and set the digital timer in the middle where we can see it. Coyne's second lie aired on a news segment on which he claimed something of the effect that he likes hearing opposing viewpoints. All he hears from his opponents is blah, blah, blah. I mean, how many times have we heard him use that expression, blah, blah, blah? That's what opposing viewpoints sound like to him. For example, Coyne said he was offended by people who wanted more time to consider the generating plant after a man had just recommended delaying the decision because people who weren't at the work session had no chance to review the information and comment before the vote. Campenzi, Reynolds, and Baldini asked that we wait, yet four of you rushed the vote anyway, on a project that I generally agree with. Rather than address numerous allegations against him on October twenty-sixth, Coyne cited a politician's advice not to immerse himself into a mud pit. He's like Cameron Howes, who said back in ninety-nine, "If you throw enough mud around, some of it is bound to stick." Both men are ignorant to the fact that no mud can stick unless there's something for it to stick to. Coyne dug himself in so deep that admitting the truth now would sink him into a mud pit. What he implied is that he's guilty, but doesn't want to be held accountable. Campana followed his mentor's footsteps by referring to a boredom appointee who shares a name with another man as "The Good One", when in fact, both men are better than good. Was that an intentional insult, a sick joke, or a slip of Dave's tongue? If Dave neglects to explain or to apologize later tonight, we'll know the answer.
Anyone else wishing to address the commission?
Good evening. You're Malankian Eight Market Drive. I want to congratulate the people that ran, and the new mayor, and the new mayor pro tem. You have a challenging task at hand, and I congratulate you for taking the courage and the tenacity to do the job that you do for the city, and make this place a much, much better place to live. Again, my wholehearted thank you.
Brett Stonehouse, eight seven five Oriana Drive, Marquette. I just wanted to take the occasion to thank Mayor Coyne for all of the good work that he's done over the years. I did serve with Mike for a short period of time on the commission, nothing compared to the time that he's put in. But certainly, he was always a very fine gentleman and an outstanding mayor of this city. He made a very positive impact, and that impact has been very deep and very wide, and I think will be reflected in future generations. No man is irreplaceable, and certainly, that would include Mike, but I think he's pretty close to it. And he's been a major part of the city and the positive things that we've been able to do for a very long time. And his single goal in doing all of that was simply to make Marquette a better place for everybody. And I think that is extremely laudable, and he has my personal thanks for doing so. Thank you for allowing me the time.
Anyone else wishing to address the commission?
Usually I have to readdress it, but he's tall enough where I don't have to do it this time. Bryce Burge, fourteen oh seven, Lincoln Avenue Apartment Double Zero. What I would like to speak actually about, consent agenda.
Marquette. Tell us Marquette.
Marquette. That Marquette. The city of Marquette. I would like to reserve time for consent agenda item one C. But also, I would like to come in and just say real fast that... I'll wait. That's cool. I don't mind.
Question for you, Bryce. That's a consent agenda item.
I've done it in the past. Yeah.
We don't comment on consent.
I haven't seen it before. We typically do it without comment, but it's the mayor's discretion.
I can talk to you afterwards. That'd be easier.
No, do it in front of all of us, unless there's objections. I would say go ahead.
Okay. So, I did want to come through and just, the main part of public comment was just to say thank you to the people that came out to the Iron Rangers game this last weekend. We had, one of the last things that Mayor Mike Coyne did was actually drop the puck at our Friday game. And I wanted to say thank you for that, and then also for the newly-elected mayor to come and speak at our Hanson Brothers event. I appreciate that. And I know that doesn't happen very, well, it happens a lot, that we have you guys come out and help out with events and show support to the community like that, and I just wanted to say thank you.
Anyone else willing to speak, wanting to speak?
My name is Robert Neme. I live at seventeen oh two Gray Street in Marquette. I'd like to congratulate the elector Mike Pluta, reelection of Sarah Cambenzi, and like to commend Sarah for, I know she's, this is a difficult time, but she's a real trooper coming to this meeting. Thank you, Sarah. I'd like to commend Dave Campana on his election to mayor, and Sarah Reynolds her election pro tem. And I'd also like to echo some Fred's comments on Mayor Coyne. It was a pleasure serving with him. I think, as all of you know, perhaps Mike didn't get the pleasure, but certainly, the rest of you did, and I enjoyed my service with him. Four times as mayor. I'm not sure that, on that wall, there's anyone else who matches that. And so, it's, at four different times, there's been, there's four years, but he's certainly a dedicated servant of our community, and again, I would like to thank him. Thank you, Mike.
My name is Robert Kulisek, six one seven Hampton, Marquette. Congratulations on the new mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, and I'm looking forward to having another successful year watching you people as city commissioners. I think you've been doing a good job. I'd like to comment a bit about Mike Coyne. Said he was first elected in nineteen eighty-four. I was mayor then, so I was able to watch him during his whole career, and he has been quite a servant to the people of Marquette. I think he has done an excellent job, and I commend him for coming back time and time again in order to carry out the responsibility as mayor and city commissioner. So, we are all in debt to him.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to comment? Anyone else wishing to speak? If not, we'll close public comment. Please, please come forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Johnny DePietro, city of Marquette, eighteen oh three Prescott. And I'd like to welcome Commissioner Mike Plord to board. And you'll find out that it's never going to be boring, and I know you can handle it. But congratulations, and also to Commissioner Sarah Cambenzi. Another three years, so congratulations. And to our new mayor, Dave Campana. And to our new mayor pro tem, Sarah Reynolds. I know that yous have a lot of plate to work on, because there's a lot of things still ahead for twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen. So, anyways, I know that you and your fellow commissioners will be up to addressing all these issues. Also, I'd like to also mention about Mayor Dr. John Michael Coyne. And to me, he was a gentleman's gentleman, and was my mentor for many years. So, I really appreciate having the opportunity to have served with him. And I want to let him know that anytime he wants to come back and run for city commissioner, I'll be there to support him one hundred percent. And also, that I wish him all his vacation time and enjoyment while he is off to board for a few months, or for a couple of years anyways. Thank you, Mr. Coyne, for doing that, Mayor Michael Coyne. And also, he did an excellent job Friday night at the Iron Rangers opening season. It was pretty entertaining. And always, no, we did good. We had the two captains smiling at center ice and that. So, anyways, thank you very much, Mayor Coyne, for being out on the ice with me for the dropping of the puck in the beginning of the twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen Iron Rangers hockey game. So, any of yous get a chance to get out there, come on out and see some good hockey. And they also have a garden there, if you get parched. So, just, you know, throw that out there. But anyways, get a chance. And also, I hope that Mayor Dave Campana gets a chance to mention about meeting with the Carlson triplets. They're an awesome bunch of people, and anybody had seen the movie Slap Shot, they weren't acting. That's the way they are. And also, thank you very much, and congratulations to everybody again. Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Anyone else wishing to speak? If not, we'll close public comment. We're going to move to the consent agenda. I believe Bryce would like to speak on this.
All right. Bryce Burge, fourteen oh seven, Lincoln Avenue Apartment Double Zero, city of Marquette. It's tough to kind of say this after this, all the positiveness that's been tonight, but I was wondering if all the city commissioners were going to stick to the city commission meeting schedule. We had a commissioner who actually got a considerable amount of votes in the mayor pro tem election that has missed a lot of the meetings, and a lot of them for personal vacation time, not for sickness or anything like that. And I think that constantly excusing commissioners like that, when they would be in violation of the city charter if they didn't get excused, sets a bad precedence for this town. There are a lot of people that rely on you guys to show up and make decisions, even if the meetings are boring and we don't always get a chance to go to the election day ballots. But literally just showing up and caring is a big factor of that, and I know that I've blasted some of you guys before when you got elected, and I've seen you really try, and that's appreciative. But showing up and trying and not liking the decisions are always more, more appreciated than just not showing up and using loopholes to get away with it. It's very disrespectful to people that work in this town. And it's tough to see that sometimes, because I know that you guys get vacation time just as much as everybody else. But seeing that you have so many people in this town that rely on service industry jobs, and work festivals, and work two jobs, and work fifty hours a week at one job. It, we don't always get that vacation time. On twenty-seventh, and for the first time in my adult life, I was able to take a vacation this year. And even though that I took a full week for that vacation, somebody's missed more commission meetings than I did for my entire vacation for the first time that I've ever had in my adult life. That's kind of a, kind of a sobering and saddening stat. And so, it's either frustrating to go through, and you can either fester on it at one time and just kind of complain about it as it goes along and don't expect other change, or you can hope that with the new commission and a new mayor and mayor pro tem, that at least those standards can be held up for a little bit more. Thank you.
The consent agenda. Do we have a motion? Commissioner Reynolds?
I move the consent agenda be approved.
Commissioner Frazier? All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? None. Seven, zero. Now, we're going to move to comments from the commission. We'll start with Mayor Pro Tem Reynolds.
Well, I'm not going to go on and on, because we're already almost at an hour, and I know that Sarah needs to go home and rest, and I think that this is meant to be a really quick meeting, but I will talk about Mike Coyne for one lovely moment. As I always tell people, the most personally rewarding part about this job, and I'm not talking as to, like, representing the public, the most personal rewarding thing is that the ability to people that you meet. I sit on this commission with people that I would have never met, and I imagine Mike Coyne wouldn't have been those people. We're not in the same circles, we're not in the same wheelhouses. I'm younger, he's older. He's been a doctor, I'm, you know, what I do. But during that time, I'm very happy I have the opportunity to call him my friend, and during the last two years of serving with Mike, it's been rewarding and full of teachable moments. And I'm going to miss that you're going to make me, how you make me laugh at the most serious of times, and how you really run a city well. And I also look forward to hopefully never hearing the bathroom story again, and thank you for all your service.
Next, we go to Commissioner Baldini.
Thank you. Ditto on Mayor Coyne. It would have been, his wife Emily asked that we introduce a motion saying he could not run again, but we thought it was inappropriate, and probably in violation of the... This is my first year here, and Mike was very gracious to me to help me along and explain some things, and I appreciate that, and thank you. And there's many other things we can comment on, but we'll have opportunity as the year goes on for those. Thank you.
Commissioner Conley?
I too would like to thank former Mayor Mike Coyne for his many years of service to this city, and for his, particularly for his leadership in the last year. For leading us as a commission, and some of us personally, and thank you. We'll miss you, but we'll know that you'll be off enjoying your, a lot of free time now, because we know how much time it took in the last year and how much you dedicated to the city. So, thank you again. Congratulations to Mayor Campana on his election, Mayor Pro Tem Reynolds on her election. To Commissioner Plord on being elected to the commission. There's no going back now, you know, you can't. And to Commissioner Cambenzi for her reelection. And I'd also like to thank the other candidates for running and giving us all a choice and really making an election. So, thank you.
Commissioner Cambenzi is a little under the weather tonight. Is she willing to talk? Can you talk? Do you want to talk?
I'm going to try it. I too would like to congratulate Dave and Sarah on their appointments. To Mike Plord, congratulations on being up here. To other candidates as well. And also, I'd like to thank the voters for their support. It's pretty humbling to know that they support you and want you up here speaking on their behalf. One last, I guess, two last people to thank. One last, I guess, two last people to thank are my parents that are here who have always been there to make sure that I knew right from wrong and have taught me some great morals going forward in my life. And so, whenever I get positive comments about what a good job I do, I have to thank them too for how they raised me. If I don't make it through all this, I would like to say quite a bit about Mike Coyne, who's been our mayor. I've served as a commissioner for one year and as well on the Charter Commission, which I believe will probably be the best commission I will ever be elected to. And that is because we had some of the greatest people that served on that, who just had that wealth of knowledge and experience, and many of them are sitting in the room It's not an easy job to do. We always joke that this is another part-time job that all of us take on. And looking at Mike's years of service, it's no exception. I hope that I can kind of take the route he's taken in the next 30 or 40 years that I'm in Marquette. I think this is one of the most rewarding jobs, even though it comes with a lot of challenges. You can't make everyone happy. Those of us up here and those of us sitting in the room know that it's a job that needs to be done, and I'd like to thank him for stepping up. I think Mike has taken the time to encourage others to also challenge themselves and come up here. But what he's done is especially challenged the younger generation to step up, and that's what's really needed. And when I think of a leader, you have to be willing to lead, but you also have to be willing to pass the torch. And I've seen Mike do that countless times. In fact, when I was on the Charter Commission, having him come up to me and say, "I really think you should run for office. I really think you should put your name out there. You do a good job." That means a lot to a young person, and he did that so well. And I'm sure until the last couple of months, he was out there encouraging people to do that, so I'd just like to thank him for his service, for all that he's done, but also for inspiring the next generation to step up.
Commissioner Frazier?
I too would like to congratulate the new commission. Welcome to the party. And congratulations to Sarah for being reelected. You were talking before the meeting about maybe having Johnny come up and speak for Sarah, but she didn't think that was a great idea, so maybe fill in, but we weren't too sure what he was going to say, so. I'd like to echo the comments of the other commissioners about Mike. I've got to know Mike over the last year, and he's been a great mayor and what a great job he's done for the city. And, you know, he's always kept me informed with everything that's going on and taught me a lot and just turned a great job for the city. I think if we could find anybody else that would step up as much as he does, I think it's a, nobody will. I mean, why stop at four, Mike? Go for five. Or, you know, maybe go down and hang out with Kivala in Lansing or something, you know. Or you could go hang out with Dave in Escondada and go fishing or something. So, anyway, I'd say again, thanks to Mike and hope the younger generation, my generation and the younger can look up to Mike as a role model for, you know, what he's done for the city and, you know, set a standard for what people should do to, if you really believe in the city, you know, take action. So, I'd also like to thank Mike Angeli for getting things moving on the city center realignment stuff with the MU and stuff like that. I'm glad we got that under control and that's moving along. Also, the Cinder Park Marina is finally, building's closed in. They're making progress on that. That should be done soon, and the Boulders will finally have a new home. I know it's a long time coming and glad to see that. And that, that's all for me. Congratulations to Mayor Campana, too.
Commissioner Pluta?
First of all, I'd like to thank all the voters who voted for me and everyone who supported me in my campaign. Thank you so much. I want to congratulate Mayor Campana on his election as mayor, and I want to congratulate Mayor Pro Tem Sarah Reynolds on her election. And I want to thank Mike Coyne as well. Had an opportunity to get to know Mike a little better over the last year, and it's been an absolute privilege. And Mike, I'm not so young, but I look up to you. No question about that. And fortunately or unfortunately, this is one of the few times in my life I've ever been grateful to be a big man because the shoes I have to fill are enormous. If I can do the job, Mike, half as well as you've done it, I'll be an amazing success. And so, thank you so much for your contributions, and thank everybody else, and I'm looking forward to getting started.
Thank you. First, I'd like to commend Commissioner Campenzi and Pluta for their reelection. We're happy to have you here. You're going to be a welcome addition to the commission. I want to, also the same for Commissioner Reynolds. You'll be mayor pro tem, and you're going to be, that'll be a good role for you, and I hope, I know we will work well together. I have to mention the Carlson brothers. Their stage name was the Hanson Brothers, and you all know that they were the three brothers that played hockey for one, maybe two years here in the early to mid 70s for the Iron Rangers. I was at the arena to present them with a token gift from the city. When they walked in, you knew it was them. They still got the long hair, the funny glasses. They were tall, and they were mean-looking. I mean, these guys, you wouldn't want to go against them in a game, but they were fun, and they had the crowd laughing. But if you've ever seen the movie Slap Shot, it is them, and they're the same, and they're just, they're a good bunch of guys. People there really appreciated them. I would like to first thank my fellow commissioners for their trust in electing me to be mayor. I believe we have seven individuals here who will work well together and that we really want the best for the residents of Marquette. Mike Coyne is leaving us. We hate to see him go. The thing we're going to miss is his leadership, and I repeat, his leadership. We all know what he's done over the years. He's a true gentleman. He's well-respected in the community. Try to name more people that are more respected than him. I mean, he earned it, and we should respect him. The thing I've noticed about Mike is his rational thinking while under fire. Doesn't jump to conclusions. He has the ability to look at both sides of a situation, problem, and he can arrive at probably the correct, you know, logical answer. If most people see something being all black, he'll look at it from both sides, both angles, and find that perhaps all white might be the better answer. In other words, you've got to look at a problem from both sides and not just jump to a conclusion or an answer. He makes you think about something. Mike Coyne claims he has an Irish temper, but I have never seen him lose it, especially when he could have and should have. He has too much respect for other people, and it shows, and he's always treated them as his equal. He stated to the commissioners, to us, that we must always listen to the residents and to help them as much as possible. He never blew anyone off. If someone had a problem, he took care of it on a one-to-one basis. If you called him up, he took care of you. He didn't, he did not ignore you. This is something we should all do. He truly treated the residents of Marquette equally and fairly. In conclusion, he served the city and the people of Marquette as well as anyone. We can't thank him enough. And if you should see him in the stores, on the street, in his church, you should really thank him for the job he's done over the years for the city. Again, Mike hates to see you go. I wish you were coming back. Thank you. City manager, do you have something to say?
Briefly. I can't leave here without also thanking Mike Coyne and Mayor Coyne for all of his contributions to the city. I can't ignore the fact that he has been here during some integral parts of my career, and I do appreciate his support, his leadership, his kindness. I'm glad you were here. I can't leave here without pointing out that, Bryce, that a few weeks ago, you made a comment that all you saw was one old guy named Mike leaving, while now, there's another old guy named Mike that replaced him. And I had to point that out because he may be younger than Mayor Coyne, but he's older than me, so. And lastly, and lastly, city manager, community office hours are this Wednesday from 10 to 2 at the Peter White Public Library, if anybody would like to stop by and visit. Thank you.
So, do all old Mikes have white hair?
The ones that count do.
Very good. With that, we're adjourned.